Or, you know, other roads that would lead into US-1. You just, it's just not safe to have a golf cart. So, again, like we talked about before, we're, we have such a different commercial environment here, and our roads are pretty heavily traveled. So, I think we need to be cautious if an ordinance is passed on where we're going to allow golf carts.
Go ahead, you have questions?
Yeah, I just had one question. The version to Carolina Green Parkway is being read, and I just was asking.
There's not a clear path to get to it?
Yeah. I was not a straight cross.
There's not a straight crosscut through it. So, we looked at, okay, maybe if you wrapped around Carlisle Street and came up by the school and through the medical complex and crossed Morganton Road right there to Bruce Wood, but that, you know, that's a whole nother risky intersection, so.
Well, I don't think we need to make a quick decision on this. I'm okay with us seeing it and having time to digest the information. Unless you'll have other questions right now, I'd say, why don't we come back and revisit it at next month's work session? Well, January's work session.
Yes, the only question I have is based on, this is a good map, I appreciate it, thank you. Based on sort of preliminarily what we asked last time, is there a certain area of town where you are hearing or getting reports or receiving like, hey, can we do this? Can we not? Hey, my neighbor was on the road? Or is this sort of a non-issue that we're just like addressing preliminarily?
I've not received any requests at the police department, can we have golf carts? Nothing like that.
Okay. So, there's been no problems that we're trying to address? We're just trying to get ahead of something?
Correct, yes.
I had specific requests on if it was allowed, and so I reached out to Chief Polidori. All right, you all have other questions for this evening? Okay. Thank you so much. Is there, is that map in our packet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right there, okay. Thank you.
There will, of course. If you decide to move forward, there's also an ordinance that will go with this for the code of ordinances, and that has been drafted and received initial review from legal. So, we can bring that back with the map for any further discussion in January if you so desire.
Any input staff has on the ordinance or the map?
Nothing at this stage beyond that which you've received, so. If there's a desire to change roads on the map or things, we'd certainly like the opportunity for Chief Polidori and his group to be able to take a look at that.
Yeah, okay. So, if council would like to discuss changing the map at January's work session, just let us know ahead of time so we can make sure that Chief Polidori has time to look at it.
The only possible recommendation I would make is areas where people may want to travel to on a golf cart is that we identify pathway, potential pathway there. Like, for example, Whitehall or Reservoir Park. I don't know that you can get there.
No, they can't get there.
But, I mean, that helps if you're like, have one, it's like, hey, I want to go here. Or, you know, I know other communities, this map, they give you, when you get your, I think in Pines, it's a $5 flat fee for a sticker, but it's a one-time fee. And they give you this map that shows you where, where you can, just like this map, except for, they actually limit roads that, they limit places on roads that you can cross over, where, I don't know that they'd want to do that in May, but...
I feel like this looks more straightforward.
Yeah, but, but for the consumer, it was like, hey, I want to take my golf cart to Reservoir, well, there's just no way to get there. And if there's a way that we can identify to get there, that we show that.
When you say they limit it, you're talking about just like telling them where they can go? Or is it, you're talking about...
State roads, like 211, there's only one place that you can cross 211 legally based on their map. You can't just cross 211 anywhere.
There's actually only one place you can legally cross US-1 on this map?
Well, two.
Where's the second one?
Midland and US-1, and Morganton.
You can't drive on Midland, you can only cross Midland.
Right.
Well, where could you cross it?
Pennsylvania.
Oh, in Pennsylvania, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, if there's other additional feedback, if you all just want to, it, in an email to Manager Parsons, does that make sense?
That's fine, yeah.
And then we will review it again in January. All right, Planning Department updates. Director Greve, is that you? Why don't you start, and then we'll, we'll have input.
Great. I only have two things to talk about today under the Planning Department update. They're both easy, one of which is political signage. Piece of cake, it shouldn't be very. And the other one is just simply a quick update about a area of town that's been getting a lot of development feasibility inquiries that has a certain designation under the comprehensive plan, and I just kind of want to put it on the town council's radar. But when it comes to, we'll start with political signage. Many of you, first of all, obviously, we in Southern Pines, under the comprehensive plan, under the UDO, we feel very strongly about signage, about keeping signage under control, if you will, certainly allowing people, everybody, to have access to signs for informational purposes, et cetera. We know that six months ago, we revised the, might not have been that long ago, we revised the sign code pretty substantially to get away from regulating anything related to content. And that actually winds up, you know, creating a little bit, right off the bat, a little bit of misunderstanding because the state regulates absolutely based on content of political signage, it's right there in state statute. And second of all, Moore County and the Board of Elections is very used to local jurisdictions thinking and speaking in terms of political signage and what can and can't happen with political signage. So, they're passing out information, and they're looking at our regs saying, you don't even mention political signage in your regs, what's wrong? And we're like, we're actually way ahead of, you know, like, we're out there, we're sophisticated, we're like, we're, we're banger, we're killing it. All right, anyways, so, yeah, yeah. So, the reason, what happened was, we went into the last election cycle, and fortunately, it was a local election. We had three candidates who were dealing with the issue of political signage, and we learned a fair bit. It was a great learning opportunity, quite frankly, it was a great test run, a great pilot election, you might say, for political signage. So, that was wonderful. And what we experienced was, I'll be, try to be as brief as I can with this, in our current UDO, we do not allow temporary signs in-town right-of-way. You can put certain types of temporary sign on your private property. So, when it came to the issue of what used to be called political signs, we changed it to say, prior to an election, within a certain time period, because you can regulate time, manner, and place, so within a certain time period, on private property, you may have an unlimited number of temporary signs that are within a certain size, so manner, and within a certain place, private property. So, we're good, right? The challenge really came, and we kind of knew, I remember specifically, Brandon, when we were talking about this text amendment, he sort of saw what may be coming about the issue of how are people going to know exactly where their property line is, where their right-of-way line is. And what we learned was, here, we deal with right-of-way lines all the time, we're familiar with the concept, we look at maps all day, every day. Your average person just kind of sees their front yard as going basically to the edge of the asphalt, because even their mailbox might be out there. So, then when they put out elective, when they put out their temporary signs prior to an election, that they're allowed to have, and an unlimited number, they put them out there, and then we come along, we say, hey, you know, you have a right-of-way through here, and then we have to look. You have a right-of-way here that's 80 feet, you have a right-of-way here that's 40 feet. Turns out, your asphalt strip called a road is not in the center of the right-of-way, it's, not only is it close to your property, but the edge of the asphalt strip is on your property, and it gets very confusing for everyone, including code enforcement. So, what we encountered was, everybody was having challenges with this. Okay, now, number one, I wanted to bring this up while we had access to the three individuals that have experiences with this, and just, hey, here's the, here's what I experienced, here's the challenges that we faced. And then to help inform us, because I think we have an opportunity to do a text amendment relatively quickly, prior to the next election coming, and I think so far, what we've heard, I'm going to go all the way to the end, and then back, we'll turn it over to the council to backfill it with additional conversation, but so far, what we've heard is that something along the lines of allowing those temporary signs that you may have prior to an election, allowing them to be within a town right-of-way, just like they can be within state rights-of-way, but simply regulate that they can't be within a certain distance of the edge of the asphalt, because now we can go out there and very easily measure that, so can the landowner. If you've got one of these, you can figure out exactly where your signs can go. See, I brought a visual aid? So, if you've got one of these, you can tell, you know, you don't have to hire a surveyor to know where you can put your signs, where you can't put your signs. And then also, the state does have language already baked into state statute about getting the adjoining right, the adjoining private, making sure you have the adjoining private property owner's permission. So, in other words, you can't, just because you can put signs in a town right-of-way, doesn't mean you can put them in front of someone else's property. The state already dealt with that issue. The state dealt with the timing issue, et cetera, et cetera. It's just that we're not going to call it political signage, we're going to call it temporary signage that's allowed prior to an election. Really, it'll come down to, I think, is how far from the edge of the right-of-way the state requires that signs of this nature be no closer than 36 inches, three feet, from the edge of the asphalt. That's really close, I brought another visual aid. That is, I've got some signs that I'll pull up to educate this decision or this discussion. That's it right there, that's a yardstick, right? This is longer than a yardstick, so, my finger's right there, from the edge of the asphalt. That actually can be, that has a significant effect. I actually chose a different election season where we have some signs from that. Just some examples of, you know, what that starts to look like at an intersection, you know, when the signs are within three feet. And also, the state says they can be up to 42 inches in height, and that is, maybe I'm not the best scale here, but, that's 42 inches right there, that's actually fairly high for temporary signage. So, that's another consideration, is we don't want to, maybe necessarily we don't want to default just to the state's, it would be easy to say, fine, do what the state says. But, that seems kind of high, and three feet seems kind of close, but hopefully, you know, we're of the opinion, after quite a bit of visiting about it and experiences, that we can come up with something like, from the edge of the asphalt in a certain height, and then allow within town right-of-way, and then stipulate that you have to have the adjoining landowner's permission, and that should also take care of the fact that the town can just say, you can't put them in front of parks, you know, town-owned land, parks.
And I would like to address that one. The state statute does, while it requires adjacent property owners' permission, it's not like they expect you to go up and knock on the door and say, may I put this here? It's more like, if you put it there, and the adjacent property owner doesn't like it, they have the right to remove it. There's a long history dating back a number of police and fire chiefs specifically, because it's just common practice that politicians would like to have their signs in front of public safety places, and parks have become another big one. Whereas just, if somebody did it, a call was made, never really had an argument or a fight, they understood that, yeah, the town's not promoting my campaign, and it, I'm not just talking about, in fact, I'm really not talking about local council elections, it's more an issue during the primaries and the generals, and particularly presidential years, but certainly the general years. It's never been much of an issue, but the bottom line is that it is probably a policy to not allow those signs to appear in front of town properties, police structures, town halls, fire structures. If we are going to change the code, and I think there's going to be a recommendation to do that, to whatever council would like to do with it for enforcement purposes, if nothing else, I would request consideration of a portion of that code to be that even on the DOT right-of-ways, on town-owned properties, we just not allow the political signs on the front. Again, wasn't a huge proliferation this year, because three candidates, local municipal election, but when you get into the general elections, it can become quite the show if allowed to occur. So, I would just ask for that consideration while you're looking at distances and the things BJ is talking about.
And that is, in terms of just teeing up the discussion, I did have one other visual aid, because it tends to be, I wanted to show a couple of examples of, we had this, we currently have this language in the UDO that I think is actually good language, but it has created a little bit of confusion about, you know, you have to be on your private property, but no less than 10 feet from the edge of the asphalt. It's like, well, wait, what's the difference? And the reason I wanted to show this is, here's an example where you have a right-of-way that is very, even if you know to go look up GIS, the yellow lines are the right-of-way. This is an 80-foot right-of-way, and the lines just went, oh, they're in the back, okay. This is an 80-foot right-of-way, you can see the road is not in the middle of the right-of-way, even if, for those who know GIS, even if the aerial image and the tax parcel data are off a little bit, it's illustrating the point that it is very common for the strip of asphalt to not be located in the middle of the right-of-way. So, here's an example, then you go across the street, and if I was to put it in my private property right here, I'm still too close. And then, there's even a better example where you say, okay, well, even if I knew where my property was, here's an example of a right-of-way line where their property goes to the middle of the asphalt, or to, you know, out into the asphalt, and this is where that provision that says, on your private property, but no less than 10 feet from the edge of the asphalt, because that would still be technically, like, you could put it in the middle of the asphalt, it's on my property possibly, and that does happen out there as well. Finally, we learned under, for code enforcement and code compliance, probably our best bet is something that we can measure relatively simply, so can the landowner, and then we can, during the day when nobody's ever home, instead of us skulking about in the bushes and moving people's signs, which...
We're not really allowed to touch them.
Yeah, we're really not allowed to touch them, it's just not good, it really doesn't go well, because people kind of perceive them as their stuff, their property, and they get real touchy if you touch them, for understandable reasons, because it's politics and elections. So, what we're actually thinking is, listen, we're just going to pre-print some very professional-looking Post-it notes, like UPS does, to slap on your door, with a check mark or something, and it'll just say, hey, gentle reminder that election, that campaign signs have to be no less than X feet from the edge of the asphalt, and we can put it on their door, and they know we paid them a visit. That's a more passive form of code compliance for these, because they're not usually home anyways, even if we do knock on their door and want to visit with them. So, just some ideas, some things we learned. At that point, happy to turn it over, and really, I'm here to jot down notes and say, well, here's what I experienced, I didn't like this, here's what I experienced, I did like this, I thought this was fine, I thought this was bad, we're listening.
I did have one other caveat on my earlier commentary regarding the prohibition on town lands. There would be an exception built into that where the town is, where a town facility is serving as a polling place. So, on Election Day, we would defer to the rules that the county sets around those polling places and things, which historically has been the Douglas Center, the Recreation Center, Fire Station Two, yeah. So, in those instances, on Election Day, our rules are overridden by whatever the Board of Elections has set.
There is a carve-out presently for that in the UDO, so we would probably just maintain that, yeah.
Frankly, Matt?
In the future, BJ, if possible, if this is too much, let me know. You have a lot of pictures there, could you possibly have some visual, like, hey, this is okay, especially in some areas where you, and the signs usually appear kind of in common areas. So, it's like, these are not compliant because of this, these are, just to kind of get a visual of what, with the distance, space, right-of-way, distance from the road, like, what you mean, you know, like, those, you had the thing of the crossovers on the railway, well, it's very popular to put signs. What placement would be proper based on what you're trying to tell us? Just little things like that, if you have pictures to back it up, to illustrate it.
We can absolutely do that, we could take pictures and make a little flyer, we could work with our communications specialist, Courtney, to do something we could give to the Board of Elections that they could hand out for placement in Southern Pines. And I love that idea of, you know, take a picture and then draw on it a line that says, you know, no less than 10 feet or something like that.
Or even two, sorry, I'm thinking of all the stuff, and if it's too much work, again, tell me.
You're good.
Can't do it. Like, I don't know how hard this, what the map was to put together for that, if there's like redlined, maybe around parks, or clearly don't put them at all, that y'all could easily produce, and be like, here you go, don't put them on the red lines, that would help too.
I think it's just a matter of people knowing state roads versus town roads, but yeah, most people don't. All right, would you guys like to talk, or do we have?
I have one thing. I think three feet is probably too close, but not a lot too close, I think 10 feet's too much. That's all I got.
I did want to say that the one picture you showed of all the signs prior to railroad...
Do you want to come to the mic? Yeah.
This is within a state right-of-way here.
Exactly, that's what I wanted to say.
Yep. Sorry, I stole your, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder.
I'm glad that you brought that up, though, because I think, yes, it is confusing. So, yeah, state right-of-way versus town. Ann, did you have something?
Go ahead, because you're probably going to answer the question I was about to ask, go ahead.
A quick comment. It would be back of curb or edge of pavement if there is no...
So, some of those, because they're three feet.
So, I was going to, I was going to ask about the, the town can't make an ordinance that supersedes a state ordinance, obviously. And so, what you're asking for in regard to staying away from town buildings is going to be a difficult thing for people to grasp as far as Pennsylvania is going to be, go ahead.
Well, we would not be out, by putting it on the council to include it in the code, we would not be going against state law in any way, because the state law says that you can only place it there with permission of the adjacent property owner. So, the only instances of like, and that's, most of our facilities actually lie on DOT roads, if you think about it.
Right, now, yeah.
Admin and the park are right there, Pennsylvania and Broad, New Town Hall will be on Broad, Finances on Broad, Pennsylvania where the police and fire stations, the other fire station being on 22. Most all of our properties, at the very least, are fronted by or have two sides that are actually state roads, but because the state law is written in such a way that we actually have the authority as the adjacent property owner to say, please, no signs, and again, my recommendation is purely, it's across the board, it's not to pick parties or get into...
Right, no, no, no.
That's what we're trying to avoid, is to look that maybe we did that, or a police chief did that, or somebody. It, but my understanding, and Mac, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, is we could just set the policy of, in front of these town facilities, and if you wanted to be specific to just say, parks and public safety buildings, but I think you probably want to include the town hall, I mean, at some point, you just say, in front of those town facilities, and it would not be difficult to create a map that shows where those locations are.
Do you want to include the town-owned buildings that we are later renting?
That's up to the council. That was not where my, because I think the general public, for the most part, doesn't necessarily even understand that those are town buildings, that somebody, because somebody else is operating those, and they are renting them.
Yeah, the tenant would kind of be the property owner, but not being the owner. I mean, they have the rights to it, to do what they want to.
My thought on it, but it's a very valid point, and open for discussion, absolutely, because they are owned. This is an interesting one, because at some point, you draw the line, and it's no longer a DOT right-of-way, it's actually a CSX right-of-way. But I'm not going to give her that headache, so.
Right, well, I think the first thing to address is the grace with which Lisa dealt with this headache, and she was lovely, and she was appropriate, and we've clearly made her sick from the stress, sorry about that. But no, you were just fabulously appropriate, so, thank you for that. That's a really tough thing for you to do. As a candidate, it's a tough thing to say, you know, to hand somebody a sign, and then they take it home and put it where they think it's their right. So, I'm in favor of the three foot. Three foot from the asphalt, I think, is, unless there's a safety issue that Chief, you can convince me of, or Reagan, you can convince me of, or the attorney can, or Lisa can convince, or BJ can convince me, I think three feet doesn't create a safety issue, and also will minimize the calls that Lisa will get.
The...
I don't think...
I will offer, and I offer this only for your own visual as you contemplate that, at three feet...
Those are three feet, just as a visual.
Yes.
Right.
And unless so in this circumstance, what I'm going to reference is the standard cross-section where there is a curb and a sidewalk.
Right.
If you wish to allow for signs to be able to be placed between the curb and the sidewalk, that probably means one thing, if you'd like to make sure that that is left clean and that it appears on the back of a sidewalk, three feet may not do the job. And again, I'm talking about a standard sidewalk location, there are examples of sidewalks in all kinds of different places.
That's a good point. And maybe you say, in front of residences, it's three feet from the asphalt. And then you have, if there's a curb and a sidewalk, your UDO becomes with a bit more specificity, if there's a curb and a sidewalk, I think that's a valid point. And my first concern is safety, and how does it impact safety? But I think that it's pretty unwieldy, it's short-lived, I really want to minimize Lisa's headaches, because it comes down to her getting a lot of contacts from a lot of folks. And I did hear folks who'd had had people from the town knock on the door, and they were very appropriate and kind, but it was also a little bit disconcerting for some people to have a town car pull up at their house, and they felt like they'd done something wrong. So, so that's probably not our best foot forward. If that's the one visit you get from the town for the next five years, that's probably not real reassuring. So, I would...
Wasn't attempting to embed a recommendation as much as to give you the visual of when a sidewalk is involved, but I think maybe the first question for the council as a group to contemplate and provide guidance on is whether you wish to, generally speaking, because there's going to be, again, there's going to be exceptions, but whether you generally, if you don't generally like the idea of placing a sign between the curb and the sidewalk, then there's a way to craft language that says, 10 feet, but never between a curb and a sidewalk, you must always be to the back of the sidewalk. Now, if you'd like four instances where signs may actually get placed between a curb and a sidewalk, then that might mean something a little bit different from a language standpoint. But that, that might be a decision point to be thinking about as you provide some guidance, and we try to craft the language to make this work. Because both of those instances are things that can be enforced, I mean, the sidewalk's there, you're not allowed to have a sign in front of it, simple enough, regardless of distance.
Right, and again, I'm sympathetic to Lisa and anyone representing the town who goes out and pulls a sign, and then has people yell at them, and yell about First Amendment rights, I get that, I get what you're, I get what you're dealing with. Mac, quick question, do you know what other jurisdictions do in regard to curb? Again, with safety in mind first, and the ability for folks to feel like they are engaged in the process, do you have recommendations?
The state statute says that no sign obscures motorists' vision, intersection, or property, and I don't...
Boy, that's going to be...
Yeah, I could see us getting a lot of calls from people wanting us to take down someone else's sign, some other party's sign, saying, that's obscuring my view as a motorist.
Right.
And then, meanwhile, they're in a suburban, and you're like, no, it's not.
I think you can make the determination whether it's obscuring, I mean, if it's three feet off the ground, and it's three feet off the edge of the pavement, I'm not sure you're obscuring anybody's vision. I mean, at some point in time, you got to be able to just say, you're not, it's not obscuring someone's.
Well, the state statute allows you to, if you have 42 inches high, 864 square inches, you have 100...
Okay, so everybody out there with their, I mean, we might have to pull out slide rules for that.
That, the 864 inches is six square feet, so that's a two-by-three sign.
Yeah.
Two-foot-by-three-foot sign, that's bigger than ours, but, yeah.
I would be interested to hear from Lisa, and I would be interested to hear from Mr. Curtin.
Once you all are done with questions, I was going to ask Mr. Curtin to come up and speak, but thank you for jumping to it. Mr. Curtin, would you like to have some input?
Yeah, yeah.
To the microphone.
Thanks for having me.
Of course.
I appreciate it. So, first time, this is the first time I ever put a sign out in my front yard as well, so, that was adventure learning. For the signings, though, I looked to the Moore County Board of Elections, the MCB, and that's where I gained my guidance. I did look, I did try to scroll down in the town website, I didn't find it, but that's, I mean, that's, shouldn't surprise anybody, right? And I know there was, there was, there's guidelines to that, and I did get emails, so, I just naturally assumed that those were my signs that were inappropriately placed in positions, and I do apologize for that.
So, there's no need to feel like it was personal.
But I do think it's, as someone that was running, it was incumbent upon me to go out and check my signs. I tried as best as I could to keep a running Excel sheet of where all the signs was, and I'll be honest, I lost, I got lost in that quagmire. I do agree with everything that was said here regarding what we're going toward, three or five feet, as long as we're safe, that's our number-one focus, and again, I do apologize if my signs are out of line. But that's really all I had, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that part of the confusion is, it is that we have rules, Board of Elections has rules, the state has rules, and so whatever we decide, we'll make sure it gets provided to the North County Board of, or Moore County Board of Elections.
The only thing that I would add to that is, I would caution against having, you know... know, three feet unless you're behind a sidewalk, or you're next to a curb. I mean, I think simple is better. When you start having conditions, it's just not, it's going to fall apart, because there's too many conditions that you have to follow. So whatever meets the middle ground, and, or, I mean, we really don't have an issue now.
No, I would say something like five feet, and then if five feet's in the middle of the sidewalk, they naturally have to be on the other side of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, obviously, you can't anchor it to the sidewalk.
Well, let's hope not.
But, yeah.
Actually, what, this was an interesting thing that came up, too, was that if it's, I'm sorry.
Bob was starting to talk.
One of the things that I could have done better was, I probably should have reached out to the town and asked, like, hey, what is the rules and regulations, and where can I find them? So it's a lesson learned for anybody that follows me. That's probably something that I would recommend them, hey, you're doing this next, reach out to so-and-so, and they'll give you the latest rules that have been passed.
We'll get it on our website, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
Make it easy to find. Yeah. All right. I remember Board of Elections giving us something, but I think all it said was like the two weeks and two days. Yep. All right, Director Reeve.
I think if the regulations change in the manner that we're discussing here, I think Bill's idea about a visual aid, where you take some pictures and simply show, you can draw in there, five feet, not okay, you know, three, whatever the way it winds up being, I think it's a great idea. I did want to mention that actually, it came up during this recent election about some of our streets that have medians. And if it's a 10-foot median, a three-foot from edge of asphalt or back of curb would allow people to put signs right in the middle of the median. And that's a really popular location that people love to put signs in, is right down in the middle of a Bruce Wood or a Carolina Green Parkway median. If it was five feet, we don't have any medians that I don't think that are wider than 10 feet, if they are, they're by a little bit. And so five feet would effectively make it, so you can't put it in medians as well, and that may have advantages in terms of just keeping the aesthetic going.
But not, this is a state road, right?
No, this is Bruce Wood, so this is...
Right there on the road.
Bruce Wood, town road or a state road? I thought Bruce Wood was, yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, then that sign is wrong.
Yeah. It's another consideration. If the council...
That's how signs are.
If the council doesn't mind them in medians, then totally different issue. That's fine, but that...
No, I appreciate that input. I think that's, it is, it is nice during election time to have visuals of who is running for public office. It is equally nice to have the town look nice, to have it look orderly and cleaned up, and not, the day the signs go out, they're fine, but a week later, they're falling over, they're sideways, someone's run over them. So I think...
It's also a pastime, right? It's a pastime, so we just...
I want to remind you, we are now talking about temporary signs. So this is not specific to political signs, it's specific to a period during the year, two periods if you have a primary, that you're talking about temporary signs. So that which may have proliferated or not been bad in the past, may be a greater number in the future.
We'll call this vacation for Lisa. All right, you can come up. Go ahead and, yeah, sit by the microphone, so we can hear you.
The only thing that bothers me about this, that they, the Moore County will give everybody in the elections, people tell them where to put their signs. How do you educate the public? You know, they don't go to our website and say, "So that's my issue."
That will be the, the person who is running for office, that is their job. If it is their sign, it's their responsibility to make sure whoever it goes into their hands puts it out.
The problem I see with that is, this is going to be no problem for the municipal years, but most of the people in the primaries and the big elections, they're not here. They're, I mean, so they have armies of people putting these signs out all over the state, and they're going to put them everywhere, but I fear it's going to just make things just crazy for you guys that, during that period, and you are going to be picking up signs constantly for like a month. But I think it's important to do the best we can. I just, I do, I do feel for your office, for all the people, it basically state and national elections, it's going to be a lot of work for y'all, if you're trying to truly impose this for that two-week period.
That has historically been our biggest challenges, is you get the parties and armies of volunteers, and it's on all sides, and, but they just kind of come through and post them where they can. And we've had them in planters downtown and all kinds of crazy places in the past, so...
FYI, we did, after we had our new UDO posted, we did send the Moore County Board of Elections a copy of our new sign code, and I'm sure they just filed it.
Wow.
So, yeah.
I want to give credit to Mac for helping us out, too. During the middle of all that, we got a call from Moore County, and they were like, "I don't understand how your regulations regulate political signs, because they don't even say political signs." And it was a moment where we were like, "Yeah, ooh, that, you're right, and it's intentional." So Mac was nice enough to take that one off our shoulders and run with it, and contact Moore County, and kind of walk through the reason why we're content neutral. And I really appreciated that day when that all went down. We were putting out fires on our side of it, and he helped us with Moore County, so thank you, Mac.
Should it say something like, "Signs including political signs," just so that when, well, because what's going to happen is, they go to a website, and they're going to Google "political signs." They will search it, and there will be no mention of political signs.
Yeah, my, I'm curious to get Mac's take on that. My response would be, that's just sort of like where we're at when it comes to constitutional basis, and I would refrain from, from describing the sign based on the content, period, even though, yes, I don't disagree. They Google it, and there's nothing in there about political signs, and we already ran into that issue, and...
Yep.
So you could say, "Political signs." The word "political signs" is only being used for you to search.
Please, see signs.
Yeah. Right? This is, this long.
I mean, that's not a terrible idea. Have, have a reference, too.
Could you include a laundry list of signs to include political signs and a simple definition of temporary sign, so that at least it shows up if somebody's doing a search?
Someone can find it, yeah.
Is leaving the room.
Put an asterisk on footnotes.
Where?
The reason we wouldn't want to do that is because we don't want to give people ideas about all the other signs they can put out in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
The case that we're dealing with is a, is a 2015 U.S. Supreme Court case. My guess is that in the next five or 10 years, most folks will catch up with that. I was surprised, Adam.
Yeah. Can we, when we hand it over to the Board of Elections, rather than them just filing it and saying it doesn't pertain to us, can we at least point it out to them?
I think we can, and we can also do an information sheet that they can hand out.
It's like a regulation is only as good as it's findable.
Yeah.
Like, if, if no one knows, then there is no rule. Okay. I, would you guys like to weigh in? You already said something. Would you like to say anything on?
Okay. I was like, I did make a couple notes on things that I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned, and I think they have all been addressed. Signs going into not, like, our yards where they were not authorized by the person who lives there. And I think Ms. Peterson's point about town property being rented by somebody else, it's the same as if, if you own a house and you rent it to someone else, you can't control the signs that go in their yard. The person who's renting should have, should have some control there. The staff removing signs, it was, it was in line with what we told you to do, but it also looked like election interference, which is a really scary thought, that someone's going to take a picture of a town car and say, "We're interfering with elections." And I'm, I'm happy that it happened in a local election, so we could, I don't know, get a little more, educate on what we're working with and how it's going to function.
Can I say, add something on that part? The word that I heard was not election interference, what I heard was due process. So someone that feels like they have a sign in their yard, and they see a town official pull up and remove it with no formal due process, that was the bothersome thing for the resident, and...
Which the sticky notes would, would address.
Yeah.
And I need to go back and address that one.
Yeah.
And then the other thing was, after it changed to the knocking on doors, was someone saying, I mean, do we just have an abundance of money that we can pay staff to walk around and knock on doors? And I was like, "No, we don't. We're trying to figure out how this makes sense." So I think the sticky notes also addresses that, that is something that is a quick, just a, a quick enforcement or reminder. I, I think three is close, I think 10 is far. I mean, the five, I feel like, sounds appropriate, especially if it keeps it out of medians.
Anne's at three, you're at five. I'm okay with four.
All right. Any others want to weigh in?
Well, if you want to address the medium, it sabotages that, if you say four.
Or you could simply just state, "No medians."
I think that, I think that she was, wanted to include medians.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't want them on medians.
You don't want them in medians.
If, if...
Don't want median.
Correct. If it is our policy that we don't want median, which actually is a little bit of a safety hazard, too, people placing signs running across traffic, I mean, the traffic circle is...
Well, most of the medians, other than Carolina Green Parkway and Bruce Wood now, like Morganton Roads is a state road.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't control those.
And so was 15 Pineby One.
Aye, 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 aye.
And Midland Road.
So on, on town roads, at least, it would keep it out of the median.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts on distance?
Do you want to keep it, you want to make that a portion of the UDO, just to keep it out of median? People are not, I mean, again, there is such confusion with people putting signs in the ground, staking signs in the ground. There's such confusion about state roads versus town roads, versus in front of, you know, in front of this place, well, I see two other people's signs in front of that place, so I can put one there, too, and that's, it's confusing.
So we couldn't do an ordinance to prohibit medians on state roads.
Correct. That makes sense. I mean, I'll yield to Mac on that. I don't think we can do an ordinance that flies in the face of a state mandate. Right.
But we could outlaw them in local street.
Right.
Which would just really confuse the issue again.
But where are they?
I don't think it's confused.
Other than Bruce Wood and, you know what? I keep thinking about local elections. It's the national elections where they end up in medians.
Right. That's coming at us fast. And I think...
On those local roads, yeah.
Right.
It'll be on BJ's map. It'll be very clear where you can and can't.
Yeah.
There you go.
It should be a map of town and state roads, anyway, so it should be easy.
And what's the problem? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, Anne, I'm sorry. I was going to ask, what's the problem again with five feet? Isn't five feet good?
Oh, I was just trying to state compromise.
Yeah. Do you have a, a distance that you feel like is appropriate?
I think five feet is good. And I'm, just, I'm trying to get... Or you think, did you think three feet was better? Anne?
It's more of a state, yes.
Or Lisa?
Okay. So don't allow them in Bruce Wood and Carolina Green. There's nobody to knock on the door. Do I pick them up and then contact the Moore County Elections Board? I mean, that's...
Right. Valid point, valid point. Again, trying to make your life easier, thank you for that. That's really helpful. Can we chew on this until the next meeting? Can we just ponder that? I think it's, I think to try to make a decision tonight is going to be, or this afternoon is going to be a little sloppy.
Yeah, this was as much as anything to try and get some guidance, to maybe draft some language, which then gets chewed on again. I mean, the only theoretical deadline you have is, you probably would like to update this based upon what brought it up in the first place before primary occurs next year.
Before 2026. Right, right.
January, February, whatever, but I don't think there was a goal to try to hammer something entirely out this afternoon.
Right.
Really, it was just, it came to my mind that because we have a, a magic moment where there are three individuals, all of whom just had this experience, we all talked about it, before we forget about it, move on, we could have a discussion. We've already taken, I've got a bunch of notes down here. I could probably even draft something and bring it back at a work session to look at and hash over before it goes to Planning Board, that type of thing.
I think if you could do that, that'd be ideal.
I was actually planning to talk about it with the Planning Board on Thursday night as well, and just get their thoughts on it as well.
That's right.
One thing, just before, I'm afraid I'll forget, thinking about the distances. I don't know that it matters, however, it's hard enough to know, state road, town road. So I feel like if our distance is different from the state distance, it's just adding one more crazy wrinkle. So if at least the distances match up, it at least provides one constant. And then if we want to, which I think we could, just outlaw median placement on town roads. I think we have authority to do that, so we could still keep those distances uniform, but then eliminate what we're trying to...
Yeah. Lisa's right, that's going to create a problem for her. She's going to be going down Bruce Wood, pulling, yanking signs.
Yeah.
Let's talk, let's...
Technically, I was just chatting with Mac about this. Technically, if it's three feet from pavement in the statute, there had better be at least a, say, seven-foot median for it to even meet...
For the sign to be there.
Yeah, because you got to have three feet, and then the width of the sign.
Right, so that's not going to apply in many places, right? That are town medians.
Well, I'm saying even with the, I'm talking about the statute, the state statute.
Oh, state statute.
There should be at least a seven-foot median in order to be able to even put a sign in that median, and it needs to be centered at that point.
Well, so number one, that creates a safety issue for the person putting in the sign, and number two, that creates a really tough issue for Lisa. So I don't know how to address that, but I'd like to have time to think about it.
I think that it's, Lisa's job's going to be hard either way. Like, even if you have an ordinance that says that they can't go in the median, they're still going to end up there.
Well, because there's nobody enforcing it from the state. Like, they have their rules, but...
No, I mean on the, I mean on the, maybe even the town ones.
And then the 136, 932, it's that all it says is the state right-of-way. There's not even a state right-of-way. It doesn't give a distance.
Okay.
It does, actually. Down under letter D, it talks about it shall be no closer than three feet from the edge of the pavement.
All right, BJ, I don't know that any of them are 42 inches, and I don't know that there's a necessity to deviate from whatever the state law is in that, because it just doesn't really happen.
You'd have to have it on a, on a crazy-looking stake in order to get that high, because the signs aren't allowed to be that big. Yeah, if, BJ, if you feel like staff can put together an ordinance on what kind of makes sense from this conversation...
What is, what makes sense from the...
Well, I think it sounds like three or five feet, or four feet. It sounds like trying to be consistent with state law makes sense. And then whatever you all feel like is enforceable, and...
Yeah, I've got plenty of notes here about, I mean, right now, I could draft something up, you know, pretty quickly, because the other, the only other thing that, that I've got a note here on that you didn't mention was carefully selecting the language about town-owned versus town-operated, something like, because town-operated would be, you know, if we lease a property or building that is town-owned, they, the less E gets to do what they want. So it'd more be town-operated and somehow work in language about parks and town property. So it'd more be town-operated and somehow work in language about parks and town property. But, no, the three-foot issue, and then you can't put it in a median. And something like that is workable, because if you just say you can't put it in a median, the issue that we encounter, which is if it's in the median, which adjoining landowner is supposed to give permission? It sounds nitpicky. It sounds nitpicky, but that's exactly the questions we get as well. Who authorized that to be put up there? Which would be the town, I guess? Yeah. So if you just say they can't go in the median, you know, that's a place issue, which I think you can regulate. Yeah. So you, not within three feet of the edge of the, and we can define that, whether it's back of curb. I heard a discussion about back of curb and edge of asphalt. We'll make sure to be clear about that. Three feet, not within a median. You know, town-owned property. Yeah, we've got plenty here to draft something up. And, you know, we'll, from what I'm hearing, we'll probably start with three feet, because that is consistent with state statute. I can understand completely how if you were to go with a different amount for municipality, that does create confusion, because there's already enough confusion with whether it's a town right of way or a state right of way. My personal, professional opinion would be to go with more than three feet, but I can also understand, we did encounter issues. There were a number of properties where their shrubs go right up pretty close to the road, and if they had to be 10 feet back, even 10 feet back, their signs would actually be in the shrubs. There were a few properties we ran into that, and they complained. They said, I can't be 10 feet back, because you won't even be able to see it. It's in the woods. And, oh, that's true, because in some places, the vegetation does go up to the, pretty close to the road. So three feet does get it out of the woods more likely.
All right. And then let us know what you hear from the planning department, planning board.
Absolutely. The only other issue I had, if I may, is I wanted to show the council in the comprehensive plan. Let's see. Yeah. This is the conservation and development map in the comprehensive plan. And one of the things that I wanted to just mention is, this area here on the north end is a property that's at the corner of 22 and Wainer Road, extending down to essentially the Tyler's Ridge Development. This area is designated with this letter R, Regional Activity Center. If you go back to the time the comprehensive plan was being prepared, there was a lot of discussion about accommodating growth in a manner that keeps Southern Pinesy. And the consultant, Matt, recognized, hey, look, you've got a lot of growth coming at you. And if you're going to accommodate it and guide it and get good design out of it to keep Southern Pinesy, Southern Pinesy, you better designate some places where it can go, as opposed to just, you know, because, do you remember these scenarios where he talked about what if you just said no more? And you started a process of buying up the private property to protect private property rights? Or what if you, you know, said you can do it anywhere, et cetera, et cetera? There were all these different scenarios. And the one in the middle wound up being sort of the, yeah, we get it, the town's going to grow. We wish we could pull up the drawbridge behind us, but we can't. Let's at least keep Southern Pinesy, Southern Pinesy. Well, the McMurray tract right here, which is a big chunk of land, the Knollwood tract over here, a big chunk of land, and then a bunch of large parcels up in this area that, you know, there's some land assemblage that would be needed, but there's sort of an area that can grow. There's space there to accommodate more growth, has to be done correctly. So it was designated a regional activity center. It was designated with a mixed-use area and an employment center. And there's other maps in here that designate, the intention here is to bring in a development that the town can approve through a planned development process to have good design standards and a mixture of uses. Not necessarily vertical integrated mixed use in this location, but just horizontal mixed use, not unlike other developments of that nature. The challenge is that right now, these parcels that range in five to 20 acres in size are kind of on the market, so to speak, whether they're officially listed or not. And there's a lot of large landowners, such as a big grocery store that comes in and says, hey, that 15 acres is where my next grocery store is going. And they contact us with a feasibility inquiry, and we say, not unless you've got a townhome developer and an office developer that also wants to come in together with you and holistically develop this as a planned development. And that's been very unsatisfying to a lot of inquiries. We're okay with that, because we're administering a plan, and the plan has been an outstanding backup for us to tell the public, hey, listen, here's what we're waiting for. And the landowners say, well, you know, here's what we've got. We've got a possible buyer here. We're at a point where we're getting inquiries, whether it's large apartment complexes, grocery stores, large churches, you know, large subdivision, single-use subdivisions. We're getting inquiries in this area, it's kind of where my cursor is highlighting up here, very regularly. And the reason I thought this was an opportunity to just mention it to town council was because each time this happens, and we sort of do the tension-filled dance about, listen, you can develop that property with some other land uses and as part of a planned development, it's very unsatisfying. Just want to put it on the town council's radar that we are sticking to the plan in this area. Similarly, with McMurray tract, if somebody came in, we would have the same conversation about what the comp plan says about all this. Maybe it was because it's happening so often, we're telling so many people some version of no unless. You know, you get a little insecure about it, I guess, and you want to put it on the town council's radar and say, essentially say, you still, you still dig this, right? The plan? And we're doing, we're doing what the plan is telling us to do. And, but we're getting a lot of inquiries on it. So the pressure is building for people to basically say, yeah, staff, we're going to take a run at it anyways and ignore you. And so, you know, that's, just a heads up.
That's good. I think we appreciate that input, because oftentimes, if those people are, if they're coming to you guys, especially if it's repeated people, it comes to us as well, and people saying, well, staff's being unreasonable. And so it's good to know what's happening. And I think you all are doing a good job of sticking to the plan.
Thank you, though. It's just on your radar, that's all. Thank you.
Continuing to support the plan.
Do you need any more from us?
No, believe it or not. It literally is just, I appreciate that question. No, it's just sort of, hey, here's what's going on in the office daily, and letting you know so that there's an awareness that we're going to keep doing what we do. Our objective in the office, everyone will tell you, keep Southern Pinesy, Southern Pinesy. Accommodate growth, but keep growth consistent with the plan, consistent with the zoning, and keep Southern Pinesy, Southern Pinesy. We focus on that all the time, every day.
We appreciate that. Yep. Okay. Moving on to our council roundtable. I tend to move this way. Do you would you like to start, Deborah? Go opposite.
Wow. I wanted to.
You've gotten a new church assignment.
Yeah.
Why don't you update us on that, too?
Oh, God, yeah. I've formerly been pastor of Love Grove AMZion Church down in West End. At our last annual conference, my bishop, Reverend Dr. W. Darren Moore, has appointed me to a church in Lee County called New Endland AMZion Church. I had my first Sunday there last Sunday. If, as they say in church, if you know the worth and value of prayer, pray for me and pray for the church. We're going to be fine. We're going to be fine. It'll be a little commute. A lot of things need to happen there, but we'll be all right. Actually, I was thinking about Councilman Goodman. At the last work session, we set a policy for dissolving our late fees for water. And I think it was just such a rich gesture to the people of Southern Pines. It wasn't huge, but it made a statement that we care about the people of Southern Pines. And I want to thank you for making that motion. And I also want to thank you for getting in touch with your connections with DOT. When myself and many of the other residents of West Southern Pines, after all of the work, after, you know, Melissa Chantel that came and tore us up, all of the rest of the pavement, paving was done, but West Southern Pines side was not, and I was concerned and had a conversation with Brandon, and he says, oh, no, no, I found out that there's a contract to get everything worked out in like four weeks. And precisely in four weeks, they came, they did what they did. And I was able to tell people that asked me, yeah, well, we have a councilman on council that told me that, you know, and so, really? Okay. So thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your friendship. And I'm excited for you, because I know there's some good things ahead for you. So, thank you. At the same time, I want to welcome Mr. Curtin. We're looking forward to your tenure and being with us. And of course, Councilwoman Peterson, we are the seasoned ladies on the council. I'm not seasoned on the council, but just seasoned ladies. And to God be the glory for your reelection and so.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Peyton.
Thank you. We'll say some prayers for you and the church. So is that Endland?
Endland.
All right.
E-N-D-L-A-N-D.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot. I did one of the reports. I did a North Carolina School Government class last week on like, it's like ethics, conflict of interest, and when you can't, can't receive meals or gifts, that kind of thing. And I'll just, I was happy to report that the guidance that our attorney has given us in those situations was spot on. Nothing that we've been told was amiss from what they told us, but it was free. We get these things all the time. This one was free, and you just had to sign up, and it was a video, it wasn't in person. And so I did it and was happy to know that. Mac's been spot on with what he's told us with that, so that was good. Also, again, just not knowing what our next meeting will afford. Time was, Brandon, I've enjoyed working with you and the friendship as well for your service and look forward to having you with us and reelection as well. So thank you, guys.
I'll skip over me. Ms. Peterson.
My insight is, in regard to the proposed schedule, I would like to draw everyone's attention to our favorite day, which is the budget day, which is proposed to be for two, which is the day before Good Friday. And we might want to think through that. And I don't know, I think this is the time to talk about it. Yes.
The following week is actually spring break.
Correct.
And there were scheduled conflicts for the first and March 31st.
I don't think we should have it during spring break. I think that the people who are impacted by that are Bill and Taylor. So I don't want to do that to them. I think spring break also will include Good Friday being off. So if people are actually trying to travel out of town for spring break, they would leave on that Thursday. Having been a mom of tiny people once upon a time who would have done that, so I understand your concern. And I also want to be sensitive to the crunch that I know the town feels, trying to have things ready in time. And I don't know whether we can do, whether we can move it earlier to the week of the 23rd or to the week of the 30th. Again, I don't know that Mr. Curtin even has a copy of this to look at. And I'm assuming this was given to us as a chew-on-this-and-think-about-it moment? Not that we're approving it. Talk to me.
It's very much that, and even moving back to the first or second was going to be a crunch, as you put it.
Right.
So moving it back into March. If you wish to set it in March, we can try to adjust our internal schedule to meet that. I mean, what I will remind you of is even when we meet in April toward that, you know, 5th through 10th that we generally hit, I'm usually waiting on final numbers from the county, so a lot of times I'm, so, I mean, the earlier it moves, everybody just has to be understanding that the more tentative some of what will be presented really is, because we're waiting on some outside information. And that is going to be particularly true this year, potentially because it's a reval year. So if we, if we back it up too far, we're, we're going to be throwing darts a little bit with our estimates.
If, let me ask you this. If we look at the week of the 13th and go, for example, to the 16th, which is just a brutal week for town council and you and our attorney and everybody else who's involved in that, but does it make sense to have a meeting on the 14th and a budget day on the 16th and just knock it out?
Why don't we let, so I know, I know I don't have a conflict. I think Bill's going to know if he has a conflict later this evening. Why don't we make sure that Mr. Curtin has a copy of this and come up with some, like, if the second is actually a problem or not? And then we'll look at alternate dates.
Yeah. Or if possible, if we can start a little early. I'll be honest, I do do a service at my church every Holy Thursday. So, but.
Yeah, I was actually going to offer that, aside for one moment, because we do want to honor it, but I, I would find the 16th to be potentially more beneficial and helpful than trying, certainly trying to back into March and potentially even trying to do the second.
Right. And I think we've talked about.
Because it's two more weeks for information to come in, and we can be more confident in what we're presenting at that point.
And I know we've talked about stacking before. I know April's always a bit of a challenge. I know we've talked about stacking meetings one week apart, but I think that creates a problem as far as notice and planning, and they're all pulling their hair out and trying to have everything turned in on time. So I don't want to move the meeting on the 14th back to the 21st, because I think that then infringes on what planning's trying to do. So that's another possibility. But I'm just, I'm just looking for issues that may exist.
So it sounds like 16th is an alternate date.
16th, I was, did you say 15th or 16th? Yeah. I think 16th is an alternate. And I understand that that is asking a lot of the council and the town manager and the attorney, but I also understand that we're probably the ones who should carry the most water at that point.
To be clear, I have no issue with any of the dates you've got.
And I appreciate Mr. Goodman's input.
What is, is like earlier in the day, earlier than nine, like, too bad, y'all? I'm not an early-morn person either, but what do y'all think?
I'm up early. Doesn't matter to me.
But you ain't.
I can, I can do, I will adjust if that's what you need. I am not usually one who wants to scurry to an eight o'clock meeting, but I can do it. I've done it. I'm happy to do it.
Well, we won't vote on this until next month.
As much as I think this was to get it in front of you before adopting it, and if you check your schedules and decide that the ninth, in fact, works great, then wonderful. And if not, we'll, we'll fall to an alternate. So, oh, you're definitely not the ninth?
Yeah, the ninth. I'm, I'm gone five to 12.
Okay.
Yeah, this will be on your agenda for the ninth, so.
Oh, that's what you meant.
For December 9th.
Oh, I thought you meant for April 9th, and I was like, where?
No, I think I kind of did, because I, I was, you were talking about the second that you and Bill were going to look at, and I, I miss, yeah.
December 9th. Just bring our schedules.
And I really like what, I think Beth is the one who creates this, but I like what you did with December, so if people are trying to, I understand the first of December is coming at us fast and hard, but I like the fact that you took it off of Thanksgiving week.
And your other option, although it makes for an exceptionally long day, but it's not two days you're giving up, we can try and do it on the 14th during the day and then roll into our six o'clock council meeting that evening.
And not have a meeting on the 12th, just your, I think we'd be, I think we'd be brain dead. Yeah.
All right.
Good. I mean, I appreciate that you think, you have the confidence to think we might be able to be coherent.
Well, the retreat's first. It's the evening meeting that might get a little challenging.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, not for me.
Okay. Mr. Goodman, you will be back at least to open the next meeting and approve minutes, which I expect for you to read in detail so that you can have a motion. Is there anything that you'd like to include for our roundtable right now?
Thank Chief Cameron for getting those last few items that I had brought up on Fairview and the streetlights around town. Thank you for getting on top of that and working towards resolution. Beth, thank you for the parting gifts of 5,000 M&amp;M's and 12,000 Skittles. And thank you to the staff for all that you do for the citizens of Southern Pines, and I've enjoyed working with you guys, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I will quickly just give you a overview of, I guess, what, where I've been, what I've been doing, just so you guys are aware of it. Moore County Economic Development had a board meeting this Monday, last Monday, I actually don't know, in their Entrepreneur Summit last week, which I was able to attend part of. That was at the Fair Barn. The proclamation was delivered to the Herrera's for the Veterans Parade, which was an absolutely perfect day. I mean, I could not imagine a better, a better day for a parade. And I think they were surprised and appreciative of that, for all the hard work they've put in for years. They appreciate the recognition. Reagan and I were able to attend that Humane Society groundbreaking, which I mentioned when we were talking about the annexation. I don't know if it's public information or not yet, but I got word that there's a substantial donation being made to the food bank, in part because of the information that we put out on SNAP benefits going away during the closure. So I appreciate all the effort on that. There was a ComStat meeting this morning. Nick, I appreciate you, and he's not there anymore. I look up and he's gone. All right, well, tell him I said nice things about him. It's a, it's a good meeting. I know they send out their weekly, just information on what's happening, you know, police coverage around the area. But the ComStat meeting has folks from Aberdeen and the county and Pinehurst sometimes as well. So just nice that they're all getting together and talking about taking care of our citizens. There's also an abundance of, like, fishing scams. What would you call that? Fraud? It's, they're going to put out.
Fraud scams.
Yeah, fraud and scams. They're going to work on a public announcement on that just as the holidays get closer, because it seems like they're already picking up. Bill and I attended the Tri-Cities meeting this afternoon and talked to, I don't remember the guy's name, from North Carolina Conservation Group. Yes.
Luke.
Luke.
I don't remember the last name.
But about water management, that was a good, a good meeting, and it's gonna come to, they'll have a couple of other information sessions in 2026, which they will keep us aware of. I have two North Carolina School of Government meetings, one on procedures and council guidelines. Another is a mayor's meeting that's virtual, thank goodness. The Festival de Avion is this Saturday, if you guys are interested in that. They will also have trick-or-treating, because it was usually around Halloween, so it's gonna be a weird, a weird trick-or-treating on Saturday. And this Thursday, there's a group at the Boys and Girls Club that's holding a mock council meeting that I get to sit into and run as their, as their mayor, so. Yeah, it should be a fun event. Other than that, Thanksgiving and council meeting is on December 9th. Is there anything else?
I should have also added earlier, you recall some commentary regarding blocking of sidewalks and proliferation of, so that led to, staff has put together a little meeting tomorrow morning for the downtown businesses to attend to address a number of items, including the furniture rules, including, the police will be there to just talk about security through the holiday season, because we always see an uptick in shoplifting and things like that. But they're, they took a proactive approach, and I believe that is being held at 305 Trackside Building, correct? Which I should not call it that anymore, that was the business name. The Train Depot.
I was going with the Annex, the Train Depot.
Yeah.
I'll be there for that tomorrow morning. All right.
There was two things I forgot to mention.
Yes.
Trinity AMZion Church is still giving out food to anyone who is in need. Big thank you to council members who came out and helped to contribute to that.